An earthquake, get away from the beach. It could be generating a tsunami and moving quickly is very important.
Something new at the Shakeout this year, a scenario in which a metro rail train had to be evacuated.
It's safer to stay inside the train during the earthquake. And that would be because I think of the buildings, if you're on a sidewalk, the glass would be falling, the building may be crumbling.
So how important is it to be prepared? Well, you better know enough to drop, cover, and hold on. The San Andreas Fault experiences a mega quake every 150 years. And it's been 300 years since the last one, so we are long overdue.
We just talk about it like, oh, they happen, they happen, you know? We don't get ready for it.
For earthquake preparedness tips, visit www.reddy.gov. Authorities say a monster quake with a magnitude of 7.8 or higher is a real possibility in California, and they hope this shakeout shakes people up into being prepared. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
An estimated nine and a half million Californians and 14 million people worldwide took part in this year's shakeout. You don't hear very much, very often, about the work of the LAPD's underwater dive unit, but thanks to one council member, the elite team is now receiving the recognition it deserves along with a generous gift. Saeda Pagan has more.
This demonstration by LAPD underwater dive team members shows how important their job is to the city of Los Angeles. The department's 31 divers carry out critical missions all over LA.
The city's underwater dive team is extremely busy. Divers were called at least 55 times last year for evidence searches and recoveries.
Their bravery and dedication has not gone unnoticed by LA City Council member Dennis Zine. Through cost cutting and salary savings at his office, Zine was able to donate $10,000 to the unit for the purchase of equipment.
It's an honor to help this unit, so they'll have the funds, they'll have the equipment that they can purchase to protect Los Angeles.
In spite of the difficulty of this job, many officers are still inspired to join the underwater unit. On this day, several were trying out to become team members. Officers say having good equipment is critical to their safety.
Anytime you dive at all, even recreationally, you have a potential to die. If your equipment fails, you don't have an air source, you can't breathe underwater, you'll drown.
Councilmember Zine points out that the underwater dive unit has a budget of only $10,000 a year, and that's only a fraction of what is needed to equip police divers. Zine says every little bit helps, and so he is encouraging his colleagues on the council to find ways to make similar donations. Near Exposition Park, I'm Saeda Pagan for LA This Week.
The LAPD is inviting the public to also support their efforts. To find out how you can help, call 213-473-8485 and ask for Sergeant David Maskaranis. "Made in China" labels are everywhere, but now city leaders are hoping "Made in Los Angeles" labels will make a splash in the fashion industry. As Gil Reyes reports, a new logo promoting locally manufactured threads will become a familiar sight.
Here it is, the winning entry in the Designed and Made in Los Angeles Logo Competition. The design will grace the hang tags and websites of popular apparel firms based in our city.
You're employing a lot more people than people actually realize.
Los Angeles is home to around 10,000 companies, supporting 100,000 jobs. Famous local brands include American Apparel, Loud Love Jewelry, and Youth Movement. By the way, Youth Movement's Colby Long designed this winning logo, a symbol of our city's commitment to take the industry to the next level.
Meeting and talking with stakeholders about what they need and how to strengthen the fashion industry in Los Angeles.
City leaders say recent improvements to LAX, the Port of LA, also road and rail infrastructure will speed up the transportation of goods to retailers worldwide. The city strengthens its commitment with plans for a new comprehensive online guide of local suppliers and designers.
It'll be a one-stop shop for someone who wants to do business in this city. And over the next few months, we'll strive to fulfill more of the industry's requests.
That also includes promoting a consistent LA brand. This logo will help to do that, to help keep LA on the cutting edge of the fashion industry. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The winning logo beat out 22 others from local firms to represent LA's fashion industry as a whole. And whether it's fashion or groceries or home goods, you'll likely find what you're looking for at a Target store, but you'll probably have to drive there first. Well, not anymore. An urban version of Target has just moved downtown to the delight of residents.
This is one dog many Target shoppers will recognize. Bullseye, Target's ubiquitous mascot, was on hand to help open the new Los Angeles Central City Target downtown.
How many of you shop Tarjay? I shop Tarjay. My kids shop Tarjay.
Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa, there for the ribbon cutting ceremony, had to contend with Bullseye for the media spotlight.
Hey, Bullseye. Hablas español?
The arrival of City Target at the FIG at 7th Shopping Center not only has the mayor and Bullseye excited, but many downtown dwellers as well, who no longer have to drive to nearby suburbs to shop at the popular store.
The modified design concept caters to the urban shopper. For example, for our pet owners, you won't have to bother lugging the 40-pound bag of dog food up to your office. We'll sell you a smaller seven to eight-pound bag that's a lot more portable.
2012 not only marks Target's 50th anniversary, but in July, the store also unveiled its new urban format, City Target. City Targets can now be found in Chicago, Seattle, and here in Los Angeles, in Westwood, as well as at this one at FIG at 7th Downtown.
I'm proud to report that this store, all 100,000 square feet of it, represents the largest retail lease signed in downtown LA in two decades.
The mayor says the addition of City Targets and many other projects downtown are making downtown the place to be.
And with football coming, and this convention center, and the hotels, we're looking at the streetcar, we're looking at close to 100,000 people over the next 10 years.
This is going to go a long way to be a game changer, to show other retailers that it's possible to be successful in a once-forgotten part of the city.
Once forgotten, but thriving today. A game changer for Target, the city, and residents, or some may choose to call it a bullseye.
The third LA City Target store is slated to open at the Beverly Connection next March. Members of the LA Galaxy recently paid a visit to some young soccer players, but not only did they teach the kids a few moves, they came bearing another big gift.
These children from Sunrise Elementary School in Boyle Heights recently received a big gift from some of the biggest names in professional soccer. It all began last year with a promise from Ann Shutt's Entertainment Group, or AEG, and its LA Galaxy team to build a professional-quality soccer field at the school.
So we came out to your school last year in October with our team, and it was right before we played in the MLS Championship. And all of the players made a decision that if we won the MLS Cup, we were going to make sure we gave you a field as good as they.
And true to their word, after the LA Galaxy won the MLS Cup in November, the school got its 35,000-square-foot Tifway Bermuda grass field, the same kind of grass used at the Home Depot Center in Carson, the home of the LA Galaxy. The field will be shared by Sunrise Elementary and the adjacent Weingart East Los Angeles YMCA, which currently teaches physical education to more than 600 Sunrise School students. The new field is a far cry from the school's poorly kept field.
You know what was here this time last year? Dirt. That's exactly right. It was all dirt. And unfortunately, you all had to play on dirt. And that's not fair. And we think you should have as good a field as the Galaxy and these guys and David Beckham and Robbie Keane.
To commemorate the donation and installation of the brand-new field, Galaxy players were on hand to conduct a soccer clinic with the children and sign autographs for their young fans.
You could go on and be a Galaxy player, you could go on and be an attorney, a doctor, but it all begins here where you're at right now, making sure that you get those grades you need to succeed.
There is, of course, one downside to having such a nice soccer field.
When the bell rings, they don't want to go back to class. They're enjoying this grass too much.
But these kids are also learning a much bigger lesson, that in order to achieve your dreams, you have to make goals on and off the field.
The YMCA will also be using the field for their after-school soccer and football programs. Over two dozen kids suffering from cancer were treated to an afternoon they won't soon forget. They got to rub shoulders with Hollywood stars and become honorary LAPD officers for a day. Anita Bennett has more.
The Sunshine Kids received a red carpet reception in Universal City from reserve officers in LAPD brass.
I never thought the LA Police Department was going to do this for us. It was very kind of them.
The Sunshine Kids are seriously ill children who suffer from cancer. And once a year, they come to LA from across the U.S. and Canada to enjoy the sights, and they get sworn in as honorary LAPD officers.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Then it was off to the waiting patrol cars for a special ride across town as they ran a Code 3, complete with all the bells and whistles.
And the LAPD officers brought the kids here to Raleigh Studios in Hollywood, where they received the VIP treatment, and they even got to meet some TV stars.
It's pretty cool. I feel very special. Actually, when I was in the car, I was like, man, I feel famous.
As the Sunshine Kids enjoyed lunch, City Councilman Dennis Zine stopped by.
This is a day that we give them to take a break from their chemotherapy, from the radiation, where they can come out and have a good time.
Actor G.W. Bailey from The Closer helped organize the studio tour.
They'll meet Kate. Kate Walsh will join them. Private practice, will be touring their set, and Kate will come and spend some time with them.
And they got to spend a little time with Police Chief Charlie Beck.
We are great kids. It's a great, great thing that's being done, and I just wanted to let you know how much we welcome you and are inspired by what you're dealing with.
Overall, it was a day of special memories that brought a little sunshine to these kids' lives. In Hollywood, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The trip was paid for by the Sunshine Kids Foundation and private donors. Another big change is taking off at LAX, and here again is Anita Bennett to tell us that the airport is getting a new multimillion-dollar high-tech utility plant.
As traffic around Los Angeles International Airport slows down in the evenings, after midnight, construction crews resume work on the next phase of the airport's massive modernization project.
Tonight, we're bringing in the combustion gas turbine. We call it, it's basically a cogeneration aspect of the new central utility plant.
The gas turbine is one of two energy-efficient generators brought in to power LAX's new $438-million utility plant.
This new plant with its cooling tower will be 20,000 tons, so it's double the capacity of what was here before.
That means better lighting, heating, and air conditioning for passengers.
The buildings will be basically at what, just the right temperature, and will be very comfortable for them.
As the delicate installation gets underway, a giant crane is used to hoist the 52-ton turbine into place.
Now underneath the turbine generator is a set of rollers that are helping to ease it into the building, and on the other side, you'll find a team of about six workers helping to guide it along.
And there's tugs, little tug motors that will basically pull it into the building as the crane moves.
Once all the work is complete, the new central utility plant is expected to go into operation in 2014. At LAX, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The new state-of-the-art facility will replace the airport's current plant, which was installed in 1961. A dog that survived a tragic loss finds a home. Families living in a housing project receive free computers, and the Hollywood skyline will soon change with the arrival of a new project. These stories and more in City Beat.
Mikey, a one-year-old mixed terrier who loves children, was looking for a home, but was quickly swooped up by a member of Councilmember Eric Garcetti's staff. Council President Herb Wesson shared Mikey's tragic story during the council's weekly pet adoption presentation.
There was an automobile accident, killed the entire family. The only person that survived, the only animal, companion animal that survived, was Mikey.
Mikey, adopted by Garcetti's legislative deputy, Guy Lipa, now goes by Sandy, named after Dodgers legend Sandy Koufax. Councilmember Tony Cardenas has secured $1.2 million in city bond funds for the long-awaited Cesar Chavez Recreation Complex. This 41-acre facility located in Sun Valley sits on the former location of the Sheldon Arlita landfill, which has been closed since 1974. The project, now in its third and final phase, will include baseball fields, soccer fields, and walking trails. The final phase of construction is expected to break ground early next year. Councilmembers Joe Buscaino and Eric Garcetti recently paid a visit to the Computer Center at the Jordan Downs Housing Development in Watts, where they met with families who received a donation of computers from the city. The families who received computers participated in technology training classes offered by the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles.
We learned about computers, how to attach your resume to your email. I really appreciated the class, and I really appreciate the people.
The computer boot camp class and the computer donations are attempts to close the digital divide for those in underserved communities. Another star is coming to Hollywood Boulevard. Work has begun on the first phase of a large-scale transit-oriented housing and retail project being developed by DLJ Real Estate Capital and Clarit West Development. The project, called Boulevard 6200, located at 6200 Hollywood Boulevard, will consist of 500 residential units, 80,000 square feet of retail space, and provide easy access to the Metro Red Line. Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa calls the $200-million project exactly the type of transit-oriented development Angelinos want and deserve. Boulevard 6200 is expected to be completed in October of 2014.
And in this week's list of things to do, Dia de los Muertos at El Pueblo, trick-or-treating at the local library, and a chance to read your poetry to an audience.
Day of the Dead or Dia de los Muertos celebrations are underway at Overa Street downtown. Starting Thursday, October 25th to Sunday, November 4th, Overa Street will be the site of a host of different activities meant to honor the dearly departed. There are also events for kids, including mask coloring, necklace making, and flower painting. Overa Street is located at 125 Paseo de la Plaza, right across from Union Station. Call 213-485-8372 for information. Let the poet in you come out, or listen to an eclectic group of poets at the last Saturday of the month poetry event at the Encino-Tarzana Branch Library. Read a classic poem or your own poetry. Each reader will have six minutes. Signups begin at 1:30 with the event lasting until 4:00 p.m. This is on Saturday, October 27th. The Encino-Tarzana Branch Library is located at 18231 Ventura Boulevard in Tarzana. Call 818-343-1983 for details. And over at the Eagle Rock Branch Library, kids are invited to a Halloween party and costume parade on Tuesday, October 30th at 7:00 p.m. Kids are encouraged to come dressed in their Halloween costume for a fun evening filled with Halloween skits, treats, a costume contest, and a parade. The Eagle Rock Branch Library is located at 5027 Casper Avenue. Call 323-258-8078 for more information.
And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Hi, I'm Zaylee. Welcome to the Pacific Palace State and you're watching Channel 35. It's our city and our channel.
So with that, on behalf of the City Council in this great city, we acknowledge you, we congratulate you, and we love you for all your service to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So with that, let's present this proclamation recognizing 75 years of the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club serving thousands of youth on an annual basis. So with that, on behalf of the City Council in this great city, we acknowledge you, we congratulate you, and we love you for all your service to our youth. Thank you.
Joey. Joey B., another colleague would like to say a few words.
Real quick, thanks.
Steve, thanks for bringing them as well. Wanted to, oh, don't drop it. Good catch. See those zen-like reflexes that he has? I'm very active as well in the Boys and Girls Club of the West Valley and on the board there. And we actually took an old mortuary and we applied for extreme makeover nonprofit edition. They only had one and we won. And we turned this place into an incredible facility. And I just wanted to compliment you on everything you're doing down there to make a difference in so many kids' lives. And I want to throw out a challenge. And I want to throw out a challenge to you as well. I didn't realize that Joey was actually a carom player. And so we already set up a carom tournament. And I challenge you to the carom tournament. And no bankies, no two-finger spaces, but I'm watching you. So but thank you very much for everything you've been doing with your club down there as well, because we've got to make sure our youth have a brighter tomorrow from San Pedro to Chatsworth and everything in between. So thank you, God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we now have a quorum. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Haller, Cone, Buscagno, Cartness, Englander, Garcetti, Weezar, Corret, Krikorian, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Garcetti moves, Corret seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Krikorian seconds. So why don't we go through the, begin going through the agenda?
Very good, sir. Before doing so, there's been a request to continue Item 13 to this next Tuesday, Item 13 to November 30th, excuse me, October 30th.
Then without objection.
Very good, sir. Items one through four are items for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members? Mr. Krikorian? Did?
I just wanted to make an introduction when it's an appropriate time, Mr. President. Mr. Rosendahl just called Item 10 special as well.
Okay, Bill called, we haven't gotten to 10 yet. We'll get there. Okay, Mr. Englander. Three for Mr. Englander. Any other members? Okay, on what's remaining, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, next.
Mr. President, Items 5 through 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection.
Mr. President, on those items, we have cards on Items 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12. That leaves Item 10, sir.
Okay. Then let's prepare to vote if they had no.
Mr. President, I believe Mr. Rosendahl previously asked that Item 10 be called special.
Okay, why don't we hold Item 10 for Bill? So is there anything remaining?
No items, no further items, sir.
Okay, let's move to the next section.
That would take us to the continuation agenda. Item 13 was continued at the outset to this next Tuesday, October 30th, sir.
Okay, then let's go back for a quick introduction by Mr. Paul Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We are joined today by a number of Boy Scouts from Troop 84 in North Hollywood. They're here working on their citizenship and the Community Merit Badge, which is a requirement for Eagle Scout, and hopefully they will all make it to Eagle Scout. They are Devon Arnold, John Forrestal, Mars Horner, Nick O'Donnell, Jeremy Peterson, Blake Robinson, Joey Treziz, sorry if I got that one wrong, and Josh Whitman. And I'd like them all to stand and be recognized. Welcome.
Now to Mr. Rosendahl for a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I smiled at the Boy Scouts. I was a Boy Scout. I made it to Life Scout, didn't get all the way, but it was a lot of fun. So God bless you for being here today. Well, I have two presentations, Mr. President. One is to Dr. Alex Foxman and a group of his folks. Come on over here. This is an amazing moment for me to share something with you. This is called Mobile Medical Physicians. These are doctors and nurses and folks who work on rehabilitation of you that literally come to the house. Come on up, everybody, family. You've got your two sons, you've got your wife, you have your dad. Come on, Dad. Let's get the whole family here and the whole group here. And this is a directed at seniors who watch Channel 35, of which you're the largest number of folks who watch Channel 35. Many of you have serious health issues that require you to get to your doctor. Some of you actually have the cancer reality and need the therapy to get your act together. Well, this is a group that is emerging right now to do just that. Dr. Foxman happens to be part of my oncologist team, working with me on the cancer that came out of the blue to me on July 20th, and I missed about six weeks of counsel, cancer of the utero. It bounced into my bones and my nerves and it put me in a state where therapy is a critical part of it. Instead of dealing with the ultimate day, which is hospice, which you might have to deal with and we all have to deal with sometime in our life, we must talk about getting back together again. Dignity for us is key. You go to a nursing home, you're pretty well on the way out. You don't have your possessions, you don't have the cup, the tea, you don't have the animals around you, you don't have all those things that aging in place is the key. And I know in a lot of our districts, we believe in getting old in our own homes, having our support systems around us that matter. Well, mobile medical is an emerging group, seniors. It's a group you should get to know, become part of, and get their services so the quality of life remains high and your human dignity is what it's all about. Now, you heard that coming from the heart, I didn't have to read a script, but I wanted to make sure I said that. And when I give them this certificate, I'm going to say real clearly, on behalf of my constituents in the 11th District and the City of Los Angeles, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to Dr. Alex Foxman and his group called Mobile Medical Associates. You're providing relief to the stress associated with doctor office visits for homebound patients. This type of healthcare allows the elderly and seriously disabled homebound patients to have better access to healthcare, which improves their quality of life. I applaud your efforts to be at the forefront of this emerging trend. And as a patient myself, I can attestify to the dramatic impact your care has had on my life. I applaud your excellent care and management of my personal battle to beat cancer. And many of you know, and Mr. Weston knows this, that Swami X. Swami, who was the character from Venice Beach, who was a comic in Comic Relief, has also now has this group helping him out because they had him pretty close to comfort to death and he bounced back with all the support systems in the house. And now he's getting the medical care of this great group. The doctors come and visit, the nurses do, the physical therapists. So with that as a backdrop, I'd like to let my Alex Foxman, one of my physicians, get up and speak, introduce his family. God bless you for being there for me and for others. Appreciate it, Doctor.
Thank you, Councilman Rosenthal and all council members. Deeply, I'm so amazed for this recognition and honor today. And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Alex Foxman. I'm a board-certified internist practicing internal and preventive care in Beverly Hills since 2003. Upon starting my practice, I almost immediately noticed an increased segment of my patient population, missing scheduled appointments, becoming sicker, and requiring more and more hospitalizations and rehospitalizations. I became frustrated at my inability to help and began to see patients in their homes and assisted livings. I began to find a significant reduction in hospitalizations, rehospitalizations, and improved overall outcomes. And in 2009, I formed Mobile Physician Associates, a completely mobile group medical practice that provides chronic management and preventive care services to the homebound, frail, and elderly population of Los Angeles. We call ourselves the 21st Century House Call because we utilize cutting-edge technology, including mobile electronic medical records, lab services, ultrasound, x-rays, all to allow high-quality care. In addition, we use a patient portal and electronic communication to be able to communicate with families and their relatives and other doctors so that we're all on the same page to provide quality care. In our non-published in-house studies, Mobile Physician Associates has successfully reduced hospitalizations and rehospitalizations by almost 50%. And additionally, there's a benefit, a reduction of overall medical costs and expenditures and a higher patient and family quality of life. So the question is, why don't all doctors provide mobile care? Well, mobile medicine requires cutting-edge technology and a very well-trained, dedicated, organized, and forward-thinking team. Our medical team at Mobile Physician Associates deserves much of the credit. Benjamin Tilson, who is our Director of Operations, Uriel Azos, our Office Manager, and our medical team, Dr. Daniela Drake, Dr. Igor Gorikov, and Veronica Radovose, our Physician Assistant, and countless back-office staff deserve much of the credit. We currently accept Medicare and Medicare pays for most of the costs, if not all of the costs, for these vital services. Other national insurers have become interested, and recently we signed on with Anthem Blue Cross, one of the nation's largest medical insurers, to provide mobile medical evaluations to their HMO, Advantage, PPO, and high-risk medical populations, who are recently discharged from the hospital. But the most important thing today and something that I don't ask for much is the help of everyone here, including the council. I'm asking each and every one of the council members to aid me in spreading the word about Mobile Physician Associates. Very rarely do we come across a program that can not only help the most fragile and vulnerable constituents, but also help reduce overall medical spending. Together, I'm confident that we can help the homebound, frail, elderly, and disabled populations in the city of Los Angeles and show the city, other cities, and the nation that working together, we can make significant positive impacts on the future of many patients and change the face of medical care. More information could be found at www.mymobilephysician.com. Thank you very much.
Before you get away from this, I want you to introduce your father and your family, your lovely wife. Come on up.
This is my true support system. This is my wife, who puts up with me, coming home very late, leaving very early, and is my rock. This is Michael Morey, Foxman.
Bless you, bless you, bless you. And your dad?
My father, Michael Fuchsman. My brother, Richard Fox.
And your other brother, right?
He's in my. We're like brothers.
You're like brothers. Okay. All right, let me just say this to seniors out there. Many of you end up in your doctor's office waiting to be seen, and then you go home, which becomes very difficult to come and go. I suggest that you take a hard look at this, and Medicare will cover it, and that's the amazing part of it. It's one step from the end, and we all like to stay one step from the end as long as we conceivably do it. And thanks to you, Doctor, I'm coming around and getting stronger every day, and so is Swami X. Swami at the house, who's also enjoying this. So I want to thank you and bless you. Folks out there, get in touch with them. If you need to know more, contact my office at 213-473-7011, and we'll be happy to forward you to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Bill. And I do want to say, I can remember you and I having continuous conversations where related to swamp.
Yes.
And to hear, you know, I've been at your home and he was, you know, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, and I'm sure that's a direct result of what you've done for him. But could we give the good doctor another round of applause? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'll see you in the back for a photo.
And Eric, if you could join Mr. Rosendahl?
How about my water?
Center aisle. Bill, I think you have some more work to do up there.
Yes, you know, we wear a lot of hats in this world, especially a politician finds himself wearing lots of hats doing lots of things. First of all, many of you can see this, would you flip my glass around? Thanks. I hate to be, no, no, okay. As you can see, this is Homeboy Industries. I have had this cup with me almost the entire eight years to always symbolize a job is better than jail, a job is better than the drug addiction and other issues. And Father Greg Boyle created this group 20 years ago. Unfortunately, he's gone to more funerals than anybody I know who's a priest for kids. But Homeboy always reminds me, a job is good, support Homeboy Industries. You're going to take a sip of water at that point, which I need. Now, the next group, you see I have my next hat on. Well, folks, come on up, everybody here, bring your hats up, don't bring them up, whatever you've got. Come on, stand next to me. This is a direct command.
General Rosendahl.
Well, I tell you, I wasn't a general in the Army, but I was a private. I was drafted. I had been accepted in the Peace Corps. My Peace Corps induction date was six weeks later. The White House called me, offered me a direct commission as a captain in the Medical Service Corps. I turned it down and went in as a private. There's a lot of good reasons I did that, but one of them was I had a chance to actually get into a clinic at Fort Carson, Colorado, and I saw eight or nine Vietnam vets a day. I can tell you all about war and the horrors it does to those who go to war. I've never forgotten it, I never gave it a second thought, but one night I told the general, he was full of BS when he said things were great at the post, because I must tell you, AWOLs were up, reenlistments were down, and there were fights every night between African-Americans and whites over issues that had nothing to do really with the war, but with the fact that they were suffering post-traumatic stress syndrome. I told the general about that. He ended up asking me to work for him. He cleared out a colonel, gave me an office next to him, and I became his special enlisted assistant, where we created the new modern volunteer army. You can see a picture of young Rosendahl in Life Magazine with the general, talking about these issues. They called me an ombudsman. Once again, when I went into the private sector, I went back in and I ended up working for a President of the United States, Jimmy Carter, in the State Department. And then after that, I ended up in the cable business, running a cable conglomerate for 22 years. I know all about business, folks, and I know all about the issues in the private sector. And I had the pleasure of joining this group when I turned 60. So when people start screaming about career politicians, I have to keep looking around because they can't be talking about me. Well, now back to my military days, which I'm so proud of. Many of you know that the folks who've been in combat and those who've just been in the military have formed all kinds of groups. I've asked Eric Garcetti to join me, a gentleman now in the Navy Reserve, who's got the class and the fortitude to appreciate that the military is an important part of us, an important part of our great nation. And your leadership is very impressive on that. And needless to say, we know he's one of the candidates for mayor. So when you think about mayor, also think about somebody who's in the military, though I have endorsed somebody else, which is for another day. Okay. All right, colleagues, I appreciate this opportunity, and I also want to stand next to Keith Jeffries. Where's Keith? Come on up here. Give him a round of applause, folks. Mr. President, this organization, United States Veterans Artists Alliance, has helped bring a voice to veterans and their involvement in the arts and humanities. Last year, we worked together and had a beautiful evening at the Veterans Reading, upstairs actually, in the Tom Bradley Room, and it's such a beautiful room up there, and it was such a great event. And standing with us is Keith, he's going to make some remarks, he's going to introduce Tucker Smallwood, who's an actor, John Defusio, an actor/writer, and Stephen Peck. I want to give my co-presenter, Eric Garcetti, a moment to say a few words, and I'd like him to say a few words either now or after they speak, whatever your preference.
After, whatever you wish.
Okay, so then why don't you just get up, talk about what we're doing here, and then I'd like my colleague to say a few words.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, councilmen and council members. My name is Keith Jeffries. I'm the Executive Director of United States Veterans Artists Alliance. We represent veterans who are aspiring or are artists in all fields, and our desire as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization is to support them in all of their aspirations, whether that's career or whether they choose to use the arts for healing. I am joined by three esteemed veterans who have been working in the arts for years, all of them Vietnam War veterans. And I would like to cut my comments short so that they can speak and you can have an idea of their commitment to the arts and their commitment to veterans. So first up, I would like to introduce my good friend and colleague, Tucker Smallwood.
All right, Tucker.
My name is Tucker Smallwood, and I became an actor after my service in Vietnam. For the past 40 years, I've enjoyed the opportunity to be creative. I served as a military advisor. I commanded a five-man team, working with Vietnamese militia in the Mekong Delta in 1969. My focus nowadays is to create a program to help so many of our veterans in crisis contending with PTSD.
Thank you very much for that, sir. John Defusio. Come on, John.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, City Council. I served in Vietnam in 1968. After the service, I went to school on the GI Bill as a theater arts major. I came here, hit the streets as an actor. In 1980, I put together a group of actors, all of us Vietnam vets, and we created a play called Tracers. This play started in a 45-seat theater. Our first audiences were only veterans and critics. It got rave reviews. By 1985, I made it to New York with the play, where it was published as one of the 10 best plays of the year. I spent most of the decade on the road directing and performing that play, Tracers, and I learned firsthand that theater and theater arts and art amongst veterans can be a healing experience. I continue to be doing that work through the U.S. Veterans Artists Alliance with a new show coming up, and I'm honored to be here and part of this legacy of veterans who are also artists. Thank you so much.
Bless you very much for that. Stephen Peck.
Hello, I'm Stephen Peck. I'm the President and CEO of U.S. Vets. We provide housing and services for veterans. We have 11 sites across the country, but L.A. is our home site. We have 1,000 beds here for veterans, and the arts are so critical because the artists create the cultural history of our society. And there are a couple of segments of our veterans who are not being adequately heard. One of the homeless veterans, there are 6,000 homeless veterans here in Los Angeles, and we need to know more about them. And the other very important message that needs to be given are combat vets coming back. This country needs to know the price that they pay. There's, I think, 2% of the population is serving the military, is fighting our wars for us, and it's very important that they come back, tell their story, so we can join them in carrying the burden that they are carrying as a result of their combat experience. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I want to thank Tucker, John, and Stephen for their contributions, but I also want to recognize the other veterans behind me that are artists. So there are two female veterans here today, Heidi Brookmeyers and Lorna Dine, who are both working in the entertainment industry. Could you raise your hand? There we are. There are a number of other veterans here that are in the entertainment industry, but there are two artists here that I would like to highlight. So first, Thomas Deng, an Iraq War veteran and USMC veteran. Thomas, where are you?
All right, Thomas. Come on up.
Thomas has a wonderful piece up here. He's a sculptor and ceramist. He has taken an artifact of war and turned it into a commentary about friendship. He's made it into a flask, and it's a wonderful piece. There's some irony in it, but I think that it speaks to the creativity of our young veteran artists. Also, Christopher Sweeney, Christopher Sweeney, where are you? Christopher Sweeney is an extraordinary visual artist. You can see his work here. He is also an actor, but he has painted a painting of a homeless veteran that we know that resides in Culver City, and the work there is to highlight the plight of homeless veterans, and we think that that's extremely important and part of what we do, to raise awareness about veterans' issues. So why are we here today? We're here because we came to Bill Rosendahl and Jim Horowitz in Bill's office, and we asked that November 1st, 2012, be proclaimed in the city of Los Angeles as Veterans in the Arts and Humanities Recognition Day. This is extremely important, and we are thankful that this extraordinary city that honors the arts and honors entertainments has honored us. So thank you again for that. We want to take this to the next step. We want to take this to the national level and create a National Veterans in the Arts and Humanities Day, and we will ask each and every one of you and the audience members for their support. So thank you very much for that, and I will now turn, please, mic back over.
And before my colleague, esteemed colleague speaks, I see some veterans in the back with their American Legion hats on. Could they come a little closer so we can get you in the photo? There you go, right in the back, the two of you, the great lady, too, and the great gentleman there. Come on up a little bit, okay? Yeah, we need to have you up here. We need the fact that you've got your hats on, but more importantly, that you're veterans that have served our great nation as well. So you see a whole collection of veterans now, and it's my honor and deemed it's my privilege to introduce Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Let's give Mr. Rosendahl a round of applause to thank him for doing this and for his service to our country. After we finish with this, we're going to be moving into two items which concern veterans as well, so I'm going to compress some of my conversation into both of them, but obviously, because it's not before us, I won't speak to items six and seven yet. But as a Naval Reserve Officer, as an elected official, it's my honor and duty to ensure that, post-active duty, the men and women who bravely serve our country are afforded the best opportunities and provided the services worthy of the service they provided to our country. And I want to thank Keith and USVAA for providing those opportunities to express in the most creative city on the face of this earth, a place where creativity comes to live, that we can heal our lives, that we can express our hopes and our dreams and our challenges through the arts, and connecting veterans in the arts is perhaps one of the greatest gifts that you can give, both to the veterans and to those who are able to see their creativity. In Southern California, we have 706,000 veterans. In Los Angeles County, about 346,000, and about 173,000 here, just in this city. We know who those veterans are. They're our fellow shipmates and airmen and airwomen, our Marines, our soldiers, those folks who work in the Coast Guard, those people who have come back from not just past wars, but the current wars that are before us. The unemployment rate, which is 50 to 110% higher for veterans than it is for other Americans. The Gulf War II-era veterans who return here have a 20% unemployment rate, and for 18- to 24-year-old veterans, it's 29%. 44% of these returning veterans also say they're not ready for civilian life. They don't feel prepared to enter from one world into the next. And so it is art and culture which is the bridge that allows folks... Tracers is a wonderful play. I saw it growing up. It's something that taught a new generation what it was. I'm not saying that to make you feel old. I was barely legal. How's that? And I think all of us who saw that, learned about a war that had such an impact on a generation before us, and I hope that we have returning veterans who can take those same voices and those same stories and put them on stage, put them on a canvas, put them on a pedestal, and to be able to express that. So I'll wait for my other comments till later, but I'm very proud to join with you, Bill, to declare this day. Let it inspire this nation, let us inspire this world to make sure that we always take care of those who are returning home from war, who bear not only the physical scars, but often the mental scars of what they've sacrificed for us, and let that creativity be part of the healing of that forever. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, and you heard the statistics that he just said. They're outrageously wrong and appealing. People have asked me, what am I doing with my money, since at one point it looked like I was running for a third term? Well, I have $110,000 left, and what I'm asking my folks that got a letter from me the other day is I'd like to donate half of it to the veterans in transition, a house I have in Delray, who have come back from serving there. Unfortunately, it was the first transitional house for veterans opened in the United States, which is terrible. And the other half is going to go, if my contributors agree, to stand up for kids, which are homeless children that are out there. We need to take care of those in need. But you know, these wars right now in Iraq and Afghanistan have created a group of young people that have a very difficult time readjusting, more so than Vietnam, because Vietnam was a universal graft. This is just affecting a small percentage of our people. They come home and they do not have enough support systems. Bobby Shriver and I have tried to get three buildings converted, just three, over at the VA, and unfortunately, we got a dismal $50 million. They could have put a couple more zeros, so then not only do we renovate these buildings, but staff them. So I will continue my fight for the Iraqi and Afghan veterans to get the quality connection of service that takes them out of harm's way and brings them back to our country. And your leadership with those stats were just so overwhelming, Mr. Garcetti, and I'm so glad that you keep fighting for that as well. If I could ask Keith to get in the middle of the two of us for the formal photo, and if I could also ask Mr. President that we get unanimous vote on this resolution, saying that we're going to declare November 1st in honor of veterans.
Here, here. Thank you very much. And let's give another round of applause to our veterans. Councilman Rosendahl, Councilman Garcetti, thank you very much. With that, as you return to your seats, we're going to go ahead and take items six and seven now as well. And why don't we have, before we do that, in fact, why don't we go ahead, while you're finishing up the photos then, and we'll have Ms. Perry, if you could, on your presentation. Go ahead, move forward. While you're stepping forward, we've got some other leaders, Mr. Rosendahl, in the audience with us today. Our future veterans are here, trick-or-treating from the Joy Picas Childcare Center. If we can hear it for our future leaders, the next generation of Angelenos. Mr. Zine, would you please recognize them as well? And say a few words. Thank you.
Recognizing them.
The Joy Picas kids that are trick-or-treating here today.
Oh, way in the back. The youngsters that are the children of many municipal employees that are here trick-or-treating through City Hall. They'll be venturing into the various offices, getting candy and other treats from the different officers. They're waving to us. We have the cameras on, I hope. All the little boys and girls that are here today enjoying trick-or-treat at City Hall have a safe journey through the council offices. Thank you for being here today, and happy Halloween.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Does everybody know that?
We're ready when you are. Can we get you guys in the back to be a little quiet, just bring the level down a little bit? We've got another very important presentation that Ms. Perry's going to make. While you're making your way out of council chambers, if you can keep the voices down, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so then, Anna, Brian, Brian Bauer, Jonathan there, Irene, Ivan, and then Frank Gonzalez, okay, and Rene Cardona. Okay, okay, great.
Great.
Yeah, we'll all go off together as a one big group. Thank you very much. Today, I am very proud to stand and recognize the over 232 charter schools operating in the city of Los Angeles as they celebrate their 20th anniversary. In 1992, the California Charter School Movement was born, with the passage of the California Charter Schools Act authorizing the creation of schools that would run largely independent of the existing school district structure. Today, charter schools account for the education of nearly 110,000 students in nearly every community across Los Angeles. For over 20 years, these schools have collectively helped close the achievement gap and successfully graduated students ready to succeed in college and in life. They have ensured that every student receives a high-quality public education by providing academic choices or a diversity of choices for parents and students to take control over their education. Many of these schools have fostered the use of innovative teaching methods that have improved the experience of students inside and outside of the classroom. The California Charter Schools Association, as the preeminent statewide membership and professional organization serving charter public schools in California, has led the way in advocating on behalf of the benefit of independently-run charter schools. In my own district, charter schools have had a significant impact. For the past decade, I have seen how the accelerated school has grown and evolved, graduated students who have gone to top-flight colleges, and transformed the quality of not only their lives, but the lives of their families. Through close interaction with the community and parents, they have been a strong, positive force like the other schools represented here. So I'm very happy to join them in celebrating the 20th anniversary of California charter schools, and I want to thank them, and I want to thank all of you for recognizing the importance of providing choices for parents and creating a sense of competition in our public education system. And with that, I'd like to have a number of the individuals here say a few words, and first, let's start with Frank Baxter, President of the Board, Alliance for College-Ready Public Schools.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, and I started in school reform way back in 1986, when I took 51 intercity kids in a program to improve them, and they went into a South Central middle school, and we found out that they were way behind and that all their peers were behind, and it was all throughout the city. And in 1992, when we discovered charter schools, so that was one answer to that issue. And charter schools have done a number of things. For one thing, gets people like me, who are lucky enough to have a good education, involved in the improvement of education for students across the, certainly, low-income students. It's also, as a result of the success of the schools, it's shown that one of the excuses for failing schools, which is that poor kids can't learn, is a myth. The fact is that poverty does not create poor education. Poor education creates poverty, and charter schools have proven that categorically. And more important, as importantly, charter schools have acted as a lab, laboratory, for new practices, and that's certainly happening here within the city of Los Angeles. Charter schools here are developing something called blended learning, which is a model that brings 21st-century tools for 21st-century students. Right now, most schools are operating under a 19th-century system that was started back in 1830. We are working with the district, working with other charter schools. We are creating a system where every child learns, virtually every child graduates, virtually every child goes to college. Education is by far the civil rights issue of the 21st century, and charter schools have done a great deal in forwarding that battle to bring every young citizen into the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Anna Ponce, who is the CEO of Camino Nuevo Charter Academy and a board member of the California Charter Schools Association, to say a few words.
Thank you. Good morning. I want to thank the Council for celebrating this significant milestone with us today. I joined the charter movement in 1994 and have really grown up with it as an educator and a community advocate, and I am so thankful for the opportunity that I've had through the Charter Act to really impact the lives of thousands of kids just like me, growing up in the Pico Union area. Camino Nuevo Charter Academy is changing lives, and the way we're doing it is very similar to other charter organizations. We are giving kids and families back the choice to choose to pursue higher education. We are not settling for the system to make that choice for them. And what that's doing for Los Angeles is really increasing the education level of the workforce, which is going to give us a more competitive workforce in the future, and that is a significant contribution that charter schools are making. What we're doing at Camino Nuevo is making sure that 100% of our kids are graduating, meeting the A-through-G requirement. And just this last year, 80% of them were accepted into four-year colleges or universities across the country, and that is a significant milestone for a school that serves primarily low-income English-language learners in the greater MacArthur Park area. So thank you. We are very proud of the last 20 years and are really looking forward to the next 20 years of serving kids, families, and communities in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Brian Bauer, who is the Executive Director of the Granada Hills Charter High School and board member of the California Charter Schools Association. Brian?
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember Perry and the entire Council for this recognition. It's great to see our Councilmember, Mitchell Englander, up at the lectern today. I want to thank the movement for what it's provided to students across the city. As has been said by the previous speakers, we are laboratories for change in a system that is hungry for change, in a community that seeks alternatives and seeks choices, and we are thrilled again to be recognized this morning by all of you.
Thank you. Jonathan Williams, who is the founder, one of the founders of the Accelerated School and former CCSA board member.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry, members of the Council. It is indeed a pleasure to be recognized by the Council this morning for the good work of CCSA. Back in '94, when we started, and I see Fenton and Vaughn and the Palisades represented here, we were only 10 schools, 10 schools in a city that had over 700,000 students. Today is very different, by and large, because of the good work of CCSA and the amazing folks who run this charter membership organization. It is indeed a pleasure to be recognized... It is indeed a pleasure to be recognized by you all. And I'll be brief in just saying that charter schools have brought choice to the choiceless. When you look at South Los Angeles today, when you look at East LA today, you have poor families with choice of public education, which really is a revolution in this space. And I just want to join you in recognizing and thanking CCSA for all the good work they're doing here. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Irene Sumida, Director, Fenton Avenue Charter School, again, a former CCSA Board Member.
Good morning. Thank you. I'd like to introduce my colleague. He and I have been co-leaders for about 20 years, over 20 years. This is Joe Lucente, our former executive director. I want to thank you on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association and on behalf of Fenton Avenue Charter School. I've been part of the charter school movement for 20 years, and it's allowed me to realize all the dreams that I had when I became a teacher in 1971 in Los Angeles Unified School District. I also want to recognize my colleague, Yvonne Chan. She was my first principal when I became an administrator. I mean, I had these two as my mentors, so I am probably the most fortunate person here. I'm gonna turn this over to Joe.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. We appreciate the recognition. We truly believe that we are making a difference in the lives of children and giving choices to those who had no choices before. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yvonne Chan, who is Principal, Vaughn Next Century Learning Center, the first charter school in Los Angeles.
In the nation. Good morning. Thank you for recognizing us, but I want to spend this time to recognize you, how you have contributed to our success, because I have this institutional memory. Very, very early on, 1993, this city council recognized charter schools as public schools. And I remember Councilman Rosenthal said, "They should have LAPD." What do you mean, "they should not have LAPD"? They should have LAPD. And then all the other city services, crossing guards, drug and juancy. And I remember Bernard Parks, Councilman, you were standing tall, 1993, in a picnic, when we said, "Now, we do not get school police, so what do we do?" You, with a beer in one hand, hot dog in the other, "Ah, uh-huh." And Mrs. Parks was there, okay? So, he said, "Hot dog? What do you mean? You call LAPD, and we will take care of your kids." Period, end of quotes. So, really, I want to thank you and understanding charter schools are not for the faint-hearted. There are three short stories, I'm gonna tell you one of them, Jan, so hold on to it. Hold on to it. Okay. So, here we are, having some difficulties, and we have this conversation, say, "Hey, look, be innovative, be autonomous. What can we give the cities? Can we be really a hub for community development? Pacoima? South Central? East LA?" So, you have the discussion. You say, "Yeah, maybe, you know, we can put school-based clinic along with that county. You can put professional development, drug and rehab. You can put a community library." So, you all voted. I know Alacant, he's not there. He motioned the Lopez Canyon money to us. You voted unanimously to give us the money, and we delivered. Second story, I know this is Mr. Garcetti a little bit, okay? Our alma mater for the kids, of course, is Alex Padilla, because, you know, it's Pacoima kid, right? Alex and Gardines and Alacant, and I can go on. But however, we understand, we talked to you, and you said that you want this city to be a vibrant, recognized, international city. You want to have an educated workforce, especially minority kids got to have their chance. So I want you to know that one of our graduates did not make it to MIT, but he's going to Columbia. Your alma mater, which is very good. Now, your turn. As you know, that we also, besides academic excellence, the community development, we give jobs. We do. We are sometimes the biggest employer. Vaughn's payroll's a million dollars a month. And the construction job in our community blossomed because what you have advocated, that hire local. Hire local. So many of us, whether nutrition services, whether building schools, we hire local and putting people to work. So as I want to end, to say that we want this city to be strong, and charter school will play a big part. As for me, arriving this city of angels at age 17, little English, no money, I have captured the Angelino dream. And it's a dream that all of us, you too, all of us, must share and with thousands that we touch. And thank you, and we wish, and we want your continued support. And yes, Mr. Parks does eat hot dogs. Thank you.
What about the beer?
Ah, do you have beer now? Qingdol, the Chinese beer. That's good for you.
Thank you. Thank you. That was good. That was quite a speech. Thank you. All right. So, let's see. Frank Gonzalez and Renee Cardona, would you please come forward? It's hard to follow that.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Perry for bringing this proclamation forward to honor not only the 20th anniversary of the charter school movement, but more importantly, the millions of students that have been impacted with public charter schools throughout the state over the last 20 years. As you can see, we have a diverse group of professional educators here tonight that really represent a couple hundred thousand families and students in this city, parents that have chosen charter schools. There are charter schools in every single one of your council districts. And like other speakers have said, we look forward to the next 20 years of the charter movement, working in partnership with the school district, ultimately to ensure that all students in the city of Los Angeles and surrounding communities in the county have a high-quality public school choice to attend. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank. And so, Renee. Stand up.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you, Councilwoman Perry. On behalf of LAUSD, we want to thank you and thank the charter schools on the work that they are doing in partnership with us. And just look forward to many years of success with our students as we partner together to ensure that every child receives a quality education here in LA. Thank you so much. And I'm here with the Charter School Division.
Of LAUSD.
Of LAUSD, that's right.
A lot of people don't know that exists.
It does exist. And as you can see from the members behind me, it is an active group, and we, again, are very excited about the work that will take place as we collaborate in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Now, we're gonna go head out that way.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti.
Just want to thank also Ms. Perry and thank the entire assemblage of some of our finest educators and pioneers and dreamers in this city and in this country. It's great to see Vahay from our Santa Monica Boulevard Charter School, Ana Ponse, who is just a hero to all of us. When I think about the schools in my district, Larchmont and Camino Nuevo, and some of the ways that we've said, "In here, we won't let there be walls between education and the city." If we'd spend money directly, for instance, Camino Nuevo needed a ball field. We figured out a way to help the school get its first athletic field, but also then they gave it to the community. And you can't drive by the 101 freeway, even at midnight usually, and not see community members using that field. They really have become the heart of the community, not just for the students, but for the individuals. And I've been very proud to serve on advisory boards of charter schools, to have helped fight for facilities, for co-locations, for the things that really do distinguish. We have lessons to learn from any school, whether they're a charter or not. And the best lessons that we've learned from charter schools are about innovation. I've been a charter school parent, and I know what that feels like, to go in there and to have not only the privilege of putting a child in that school, but to have the responsibility. You guys make parents work. And that's the thing that is great, because we can't succeed in education if we don't have parents and a community and a neighborhood and a city and schools working together. Let us blow up the islands that schools used to be and let them be the focus of the community again. And you certainly have done that in the city. And thank you to Ms. Perry for bringing so many great leaders in here today. It's great to see you. Congratulations, and here's to the next 20 years. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I must say that, you know, we have a contentious issue in my district with New West. It's a charter school. We had a huge game changer the other day when our Superintendent of Public Schools and I worked with Braddock, a local elementary school in walking distance. 23 of their children are now there at this. So it's a combination of the partnership with the city of LA and with the charter school. It is a game changer. There's still a lot of residents in that neighborhood very upset with me, and they're having a hard time appreciating it. But the quality of education that now gives those Braddock kids is untenable. And they will continue Braddock to be part of that program, and that charter school will be a high bread in terms of a game changer for all of us. So I just want to acknowledge it and thank you again, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Perry. And I just wanted to thank all of you as well. And having, as Brian mentioned, Granada in my district and many of the other charters and folks that actually live in my district as well, we were just talking before council, it's amazing, because I've got the largest charter in the entire country in my district, and for the first time in two years in a row, won the National Academic Decathlon. So I wanted to thank all of you for everything you do and truly appreciate the remarkable work you're doing with our young kids. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perry. With that, we're gonna go ahead and take Item 6 and 7 together. We've got cards on 6 and 7.
Can I make up some comments before, and then we'll turn it over to...
Before, before...
Yeah. Just gotta frame it. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have two items before us, the concern that takes some of the momentum from Item Number 2, looking at the role of veterans. I think I went through some of the statistics, that 173,000 veterans live here in the city of Los Angeles. We gave more soldiers and airmen and airwomen and Marines and sailors to the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan than any other city in the United States. And we've paid a higher price as well. And those who served before in Vietnam and in Korea and World War II, in conflicts that we saw throughout the world in between those wars, we have not done always our best here in Los Angeles to step up and to answer that. As the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan scale down, more veterans are returning home to Los Angeles, and they face significant personal and economic challenges. According to California Department of Veterans Affairs, California is home to nearly 2 million veterans. And I want to thank my brothers who are here, my brothers and sisters who are here, who have served in the military, who have given themselves, who know folks who have given their lives and their limbs and their souls and their spirits sometimes to the conflicts that this nation asks us to roll out on. The two motions that I have here today do two things. One, it asks for this city, for the first time, to call for Veterans Affairs Coordinator here in the city of Los Angeles. We've seen in other cities, whether it's help with jobs, or whether it's finding housing, whether it's mental health issues with PTSD, substance abuse issues, or just finding a community. We need to pull together all the pieces to make sure that we have a city that is the most welcoming home to vets. We have a second motion as well that asks to build on something that we've done and pioneered last year in my district, but to expand. And thank you to Mr. Buscagno for seconding this, and we're gonna be also down in the Harbor area doing this. But to look at career and legal services to veterans, so that we could make sure that, for instance, you want to hear a startling statistic, at Los Angeles City College, one half, one half of the veterans who are students there are homeless. When we look at that tragedy and what we can do to make that better, the Veterans Affairs Coordinator would establish goals for veteran employment in Los Angeles, take steps towards co-locating veteran services in our city workforce offices, so that veterans can get the personal and career services they need in one location. And whether it's in security, whether it's in other areas, we focused on what we can do to make sure that that is available for all of our veterans. My grandfather Salvador, who was an immigrant from Mexico, was carried across the border in his mother's arms, escaping the persecution and violence of the Mexican Revolution. But he put on this nation's uniform and came back from the Pacific Theater in World War II and became a United States citizen. We must afford the generation of veterans that is before us that same opportunity. And on Veterans Arts and Humanities Day that Mr. Rosendahl so beautifully brought in, I'm honored and humbled to celebrate the heroics and the creativity of the men and women who come back to Los Angeles. But let us take another step forward today by saying that we will be able to not only provide a thank you to them, but provide real services to them, to allow them to get off the streets, to allow them to come into jobs, to make sure that they can move forward without adjustment to civilian life. So I'd ask for both your support today. I know we have speaker cards. We also have a short presentation from some of the folks who will be providing these services from public counsel and from MCS rehabilitative services on those jobs, to inform folks about what those opportunities are for our veterans. But I'll leave it in your hands about what goes first.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes. That's the meat and potatoes of what we really needed to do. And I got to thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for putting it clearly out there, with public counsel to provide legal case management services to homeless vets. That's the follow-through that we dramatically need. And then to take AB 1290 funds to provide support services to at least 50 veterans. This is putting our money where our mouth is, colleagues. And by supporting this, we're adding the entire energy we need. But look, we've got 6,000 to 8,000 homeless vets out there. This is just scratching the service. Every time I see a homeless vet, I ask them, "What war? What situation?" And when I hear real stories of combat situations, if we don't reach out and tie services to them, we, as a nation, are irresponsible and should be ashamed of ourselves. As I mentioned earlier, when I went back to DC, I got the lip service, but not the follow-through. So it's the follow-through, Mr. Garcetti, the meat and potatoes you put on, and I applaud you for making this happen. Thank you very much. And could they just stand up so people can see them in the cameras? And I know that Mr. Garcetti's gonna do a presentation with them, but let's just take a look at those folks with their hats on. Put the camera over there, folks. Take a look at who we're talking about. Just about to zoom in on you. Zoom in. Come on.
Wake up.
Yes. Exactly.
Okay, if we can keep it down in the audience, please. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for cards. And we're gonna go ahead and open this discussion up for one minute. We've got Chase Melsapp, followed by Irene Cruz. If you could please come to the podium. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Good morning, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, specifically Councilmen Garcetti, Buscagno, and Rosenhall. Thank you for bringing these motions to hand today. My name is Chase Melsapp. I'm one of the veterans that you speak of, recently come home. And I just want to thank my fellow veterans here in the city of Los Angeles for giving me the opportunity to speak on their behalf today. There's a lot that couldn't be here due to work and other commitments, and I'm glad that we can take care of this business today. Many of our veterans continue to serve within the local businesses here in Los Angeles, our police and fire departments, as well as the city staff itself. Yet even more come home and are struggling with a position in our community that cannot find their way. I'm a recently transitioned veteran, and I'm proud to call Los Angeles my home. From my own personal experience and the stories I hear every single day from veterans in our area, our transition from military to civilian life has been as challenging and frustrating and stressful as our experiences abroad. As a minority in America and in Los Angeles, we are often overlooked and we're the last to cry for help. And I'm sorry I'm going over time here, I just want to iterate one motion. The motions you bring here today are a great opportunity to demonstrate our dedication to our veterans, and that they're the first steps to welcome them home. We, as veterans, have unique qualities and skills, and above all, that's the idea and the concept of service before self. We live that. These motions presented today, voting those yes, putting those through, are an opportunity for us to continue to serve. They help us...
Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Cruz? Not here, Irene Cruz? Okay. Followed by Hernan Vera, John Walsh, and Arnold Sacks.
Good morning. My name is Hernan Vera. I'm the president and CEO of Public Counsel. Wanted to thank the entire council, and especially Councilman Garcetti, for your pass support of our efforts and your consideration of Number 6, and Councilmember Rosendahl for your leadership on this. I liked your phrase, "The meat and potatoes," it really is, because we've heard the statistics, we know the problem is there, but what are we doing about it? For public counsel, what we can do is the case management. Every veteran we serve, we can get to go from a monthly benefit of $1,071 up to $2,474. It's a huge amount of money. They're struggling, but we can do something about it with the Hollywood Forward Collaborative. It's unique. What we do is we get PATH, Department of Mental Health, LAPD. We put the pictures of the homeless veterans up and say, "What can we do? Let's do a case study. What can we do for each one?" And we really can. Sergeant Danzinger, who we helped, was living 10 years under an overpass. Now we filed his case, and we're getting him services. So thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to the partnership.
Thank you very much. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. For identification purposes, only anybody but Garcetti for mayor. For identification purposes, only anybody but Garcetti for mayor committee. You know, I want you to know I'm a proud draft evader, proud that I stayed out of the Vietnam War. And there isn't a single Vietnamese in the world whose blood is on my hands, not a Cambodian whose blood is on my hands, and not a Laotian whose blood on my hands. And for those of you who went, I support you. I support you more than the government that sent you over there. I support you. We were killing the Afghans, and now they're killing you here. And Garcetti is using this shamelessly for his election...
You got to stay on that. Mr. Walsh, you have to stay on the subject, please.
The subject is veterans. The subject is Garcetti's speech. And let me tell you, all he's interested in is getting elected. That's all he's interested in. And I have the honesty. HollywoodHighlands.org, live the veterans. My great-great-great-great-grandfather, Murphy, was a Revolutionary War veteran.
All right. Thank you. Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. This contract amendment with Public Counsel, it doesn't really mention Public Counsel being a nonprofit or a for-profit, but the perception is Public Counsel would be part of a city agency, and in fact, it probably isn't. But my real concerns, this AB 1290 funding, I believe last year, the controller mentioned that there was $43 million in AB 1290 funding available to the city council, and you're spending $125,000 on this effort. And I believe in one of Western World presentations a couple of weeks ago, you had the Chamber of Commerce here. So what about the Chamber of Commerce Home for Good program that was brought up? Why don't you get involved with them? This person you want to have to lead, the Veterans Affairs, wouldn't it be better served to have the Chamber of Commerce involved in that, who have more resources than the city, that involve a city agency, again, where you have no money?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. All right, with that, Mr. Buscagno, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to one of our public comment that was just made, let me remind him that Mr. Garcetti is an officer with the Reserve, active duty at the United States Navy. And I stand here, Eric, to, an honor to stand and second this motion. And as you know, Mr. Garcetti, the harbor area is home to one of the largest number of veterans in the city of Los Angeles. We have a number of Air Force bases as well. And I'm, and I've heard from the number of veterans that I represent on the importance of providing them with resources, and that's why on November 10th, we're going to have Veterans Appreciation Day along with the mayor. We're going to host, the mayor and I are hosting this huge Veterans Appreciation Day in front of the USS Iowa. So just know that you have our commitment and our continued dedication to ensure that the veterans have the appropriate resources readily available here in the city of Los
Garcetti to close.
Thank you. Just to conclude, I want to thank you, Joe, and I want to thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And I want to thank our veterans. We fight for all sorts of freedoms, including the freedom of speech here. It's one of the greatest things we have here, as anybody at the podium in this country can come say anything they want. But this came straight from the community. It came from the business community. It came from Public Counsel, when we realized there were veterans who weren't even accessing the benefits that they deserved and that they had fought for. That the smallest amount of dollars can bring a big amount of dollars to their lives and to our streets. And having a veterans coordinator, I want to thank Greg Irish, who's here from our Workforce Investment Board, really that focus, and it hasn't been that we haven't been looking at veterans, there's been a couple places that we have, but to be able to expand those programs and be able to make sure that now, as so many people come home, that they have a place to come home to, will be a legacy for everybody in these chambers and something that we can be proud of. So let this be a beginning. It certainly won't be the end, as we continue to do more to make sure that Los Angeles recognizes its veterans. And thank you again, everybody, for your service and for being here. I ask you for an eye vote.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and vote on items six and seven together. Open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Ten eyes.
Okay, thank you. Now we need to vote on reconsideration for item one. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, now, we've had public testimony on this item before, but based on its importance, we're going to go, 10 speakers, two minutes each, start off with Alice Goff, Verdel Flores, Andy Morales, please come forward. Please come forward. Please come forward. Doesn't have to be in order.
Good morning, President, and all members of the council. On behalf of the members of the Coalition of Los Angeles City Unions, I respectfully request that you postpone today's vote on the second reading of the ordinance, which will add a second tier to our retirement system. However, obviously, that's already taken place. So it is important that we express to you our concerns. Number one, that the only retirement security our members have is their pensions. We do not get social security. So this is, in fact, our retirement security. We don't believe, number two, that all the facts have been presented, particularly as the change relates to the impact on the current system and employees within that system. Number three, the way in which the plan is going forward bypasses our collective bargaining process and really is a slap in the face to the members who have worked closely with the city for the last five years to find solutions to the financial problems. And fourth, Los Angeles has been a leader in fighting for the rights of working people and have made this a livable, safe, and just city for all. It's really disheartening now to think that we're going backwards. We will now be a leader in dismantling those rights. We're asking that you come to the table and bargain with us to once again find a solution so that we don't have workers retiring into poverty. The future of Los Angeles is at stake. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Verdel Flores, followed by Andy Morales.
My name is Verdel Flores. I'm a librarian with the city of L.A. for the past 10 years. This two-tier system that you are considering is not the answer to the city's financial problems. The mayor and the CAO congratulated the coalition, if you remember, and said if they had, they had done our job, and if they needed to come back to the coalition, it meant they had not done their job. It is four months into the current fiscal year, and the CAO is back crying fiscal woes. He's asking you to do what he has refused to do, and that is to negotiate in good faith with the coalition. You should be asking him why he hasn't done his job and what he hasn't done to do his job, not put the city workers, the current city workers and future city workers into fiscal problems. The CAO is the one who should be up here answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was Andy Morales, Maria Elena DeRazzo, Natty, and I could be wrong with this, Natty Macklin. Please go.
Good morning, members of the city council. I'm here, I'm here on behalf of the whole labor movement. By now, you should have received a letter signed by the principal officers of every single principal union and industry in Los Angeles. And we are here to say that we are deeply disappointed in what the city council is voting on and how the city council has voted. City workers are a very important part of the middle class in Los Angeles. These workers are not eligible to receive social security. The only income that they have that will support themselves are their pensions when they retire. You do not yet have the knowledge to make a responsible decision. There's lots of numbers. There are a lot of numbers being thrown around, but the only numbers that matter is the analysis done by the laser systems, and that will not be ready until December. That means that you are taking a drastic step, potentially pushing city workers into poverty when they retire without having the facts. And it is going to come back and haunt you because you cannot make a decision like that without and have the legal and moral obligation that you have and meet that obligation without having the information in front of you. You have totally ignored the collective bargaining process. And make no mistake, this vote will go down as L.A.'s first time of doing a complete end run around collective bargaining. These city workers have bargained in good faith and conceded hundreds of millions of dollars in savings. And let me last say, you have spent more time saving Billy the Elephant than considering the retirement of workers, of human beings that collect the trash, clean the sewers, inspect our buildings...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have, and again, I apologize, like a Nandy Macklin? Victor Gordo? Michael Hunt, following Victor Gordo?
Mr. President, members of the city council, let me say that I'm very disappointed to stand before you today. Again, this reminds me of the movie Fifty First Dates, where every time, every night, we have a different appointment, we have to reintroduce ourselves. So let me introduce us to you. We're the people who helped you out when the workforce needed to be shrunk. We did so responsibly. We're the people who helped you out when you needed voluntary furloughs. We're the people who helped you out when we needed to increase the contribution on the pension to 11%. And most recently, we're the people who helped you out to resolve a problem in the Joint Labor Benefits Management Committee involving health benefits. We're the people who, every step of the way, when you have found yourself in a difficult situation, we're the people who have responded. And with one fell swoop today via this unilateral action, you are undoing that partnership. And I'm here to tell you that we will vigorously pursue our administrative and legal remedies. You violated your obligation to meet and confer on the one end, and on the other end, you've attacked the integrity of our collective bargaining agreement. And you can be sure that this coalition and every member of this coalition will vigorously, vigorously defend the integrity of collective bargaining, defend the integrity of our collective bargaining agreements, and the rights of the workers contained therein.
Yes. Okay, Michael? Michael Hunt? No, Michael? Adrian? Oh, there he is. Go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Michael Hunt. I am a transportation engineer and have worked for the city of Los Angeles for 21 years. I'm a union steward, and I have served on the executive board for SEIU 721. I'm also a bargaining team member for the professional supervisory unit. I'm here today to encourage you to reconsider your previous votes on this matter of adopting a two-tier retirement system. It's not the right thing to do for the city or the constituents. I question whether you have sufficiently vetted this issue properly. I find it hard to believe that you're comfortable with the fact that it will close off the current pension system and put greater weight on the already stressed general fund, or that you're comfortable knowing that you are unilaterally making changes to the benefits package of job classes that I represent. Logistically, you think a 65-year-old person doing physically demanding work is going to be proficient? My dad's a plumber. At 55, he became very immobile. At 60, he was basically not mobile, hardly at all. Now he's 71 and can't move. He's bedridden. Is that what we want for the city of Los Angeles? I don't think so. What type of engineer, what type of employee at all are you going to get with this type of package to come to the city? As I've stated, I've worked here for 21 years. I've seen council members like yourself come and go through the years. I find myself as a steward for the city at this point. I cannot allow this knee-jerk reaction, seemingly potentially motivated decision stand uncontested. I will be bringing myself and a few hundred of my closest engineering friends to your neighborhood councils and community councils to let them know what's happening. Be prepared. Thank you.
Adrian Buchanan, Brian Story, and Gus Malkone.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Adrian Buchanan, and I'm a secretary of Actme Local 3090. And as you already know, city workers work 30 or more years providing quality service. We provide services over the phone, at your public counters, in the field, and also behind the scene. We keep the city running smooth. So if you do pass this ordinance, you're going to destroy the only retirement benefit that we will receive. And as you already know, we do not get social security, and the public needs to know that. So after we have served so many years, please let your city finally retire with dignity and as a proud city worker. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
How you doing? My name is Brian Story, and I worked in the sanitation department for 25 years, been a union steward for over 20 years. And I'm here today to tell you why this is a very bad plan. I'm extremely concerned about the security of my retirement. Right now, today, I had an employee walk up to me, over 20-year employee coworker of mine, and told me that he lost his house. He lost his house off of the last ratification that we did, we democratically agreed upon, and we gave up more money for retiree spousal. That $200-some dollars a month that he's losing caused him to lose his house, sad as that is. I was one of the people that helped count the votes, and then you have the mayor go publicly on some of these small shows that he'd be going on, lying to the public, telling them what he made us take, and he didn't make us take nothing. We democratically voted on it in good faith. And then you guys keep coming back asking for more. I also want to share with you, I'm standing on the shoulders of city workers prior to me. So now, so I can have benefits. Here I am today, I'm standing up for my fellow coworkers and future city employees. And it's a travesty that Richard Reardon, a lot of you may not know, but I know, I'm going to share with the public today, when he first became mayor of this great city, the first thing he did was came after sanitation and city employees trying to privatize. So what the mayor do, go and hire him as an advisor like he ain't got his own brain, to ask Richard Reardon to help him think about making decisions for our retirement. It's a travesty. I could use some other choice words, but I won't do it today. I'm just going to tell you that this needs to end. You guys need to make better decisions.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Story. Gus, now it's Gus. It's Gus. Please come forward.
Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Gus Malkone. I'm a civil engineer, project manager with the Department of Public Work. I've been working for the city for 26 years and yet to see effective solutions coming from the city council. It has been a one-way street, putting the burden on the employee, make them pay the price for your decision without listening and working with the employee. Please, I know you are intellectual people, and I'm asking you to use your wisdom and brains to come up with a better idea than crushing the employee. Your proposal is devastating to the city employee. This bad practice has to stop once for all. Thank you for your consideration and work on this proposal.
Thank you. Now it's Mr. ... Yes, sir, you are?
Chris Flake, I believe you have my card up there.
I have more time, Alan. Chris, I don't, but go ahead, fill out one before you leave. Go ahead.
Very well. Thank you, Honorable President, honorable council members. Yes, I believe they are honorable. They care for their constituencies. I've heard them speak a number of times. I've discussed things with a number of the council members. I know that you have in your hearts what's good for the citizens of L.A. But let's look at the economics. What happens, really, if something like this pension... What happens really if something like this pension plan were to take effect, or Reardon's pension plan take effect? It automatically decreases the value of the take-home pay of any city employee. It pushes down the wages of that employee. It pushes employees out to the private sector, floods the private sector with more people. It pushes down those wages in the private sector. The effect is to push down wages around the entire LA area, depresses those wages of the citizens of LA and the surrounding communities. This measure is not one to help the city. It is a measure to help the large corporations, like Reardon's interests, provide an incremental boost to executive salaries by giving them a bonus for having produced lower wage requirements for their staffs. Now, at the same time, here at the city, we want to do something. We in the union want to do everything we can to provide the city with the tools that are necessary to become economically more viable than it is. Please work with us, bargain with us, negotiate with us, because we have it in our interest for the citizens of LA. Thank you.
Chris, I found your, is it Flague?
Flague, yes.
I found it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so now we will move on. That's our 20 minutes. We move Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. If I can ask our CAO to come forward, Mr. Santana? I thank the folks who were here for public comment, our city workers, who provide the services that we give to our residents here in Los Angeles. Mr. Malcone isn't here today, but he and I introduced a motion when this came here last time to look at the 30 days in between as a time to go to the table and to listen. Mr. Santana, some of the things that we've done in the past, which were cited by our unions, which we've talked about, like our early retirement center program, did ERIP would come from us or was that an idea that they brought to the table? Have we had a combination of ideas from the management side and from the labor side in the past?
I wasn't here when ERIP was initiated, but it's my understanding that it resulted from a series of discussions that management were having with labor.
It's my memory that I think it came actually from SEIU and the coalition that initially proposed that as a way of cost savings. And in the face of some skepticism, some of us helped push that through as a way of saving money. And workers who stayed behind actually increased the amount that they paid, that was the first percent, to try to make it as cost-neutral as possible. In other words, saying to their coworkers, yeah, go ahead, you leave a couple of years early, it's on my tab, which is a pretty generous thing to do, which especially senior workers didn't need to do, those who weren't facing layoffs, but they did it because of the solidarity I think they felt for their fellow employees. So could you tell me what's happened the last 30 days as we've given that instruction? Were the instructions not clear enough? Because what I've been hearing is there hasn't been much conversation at all.
Immediately after your office, your council, rather, directed us to initiate conversations, my office invited all of the civilian unions to sit down with us to discuss the proposal and to hear any ideas that they may have. We did have two meetings, one that was done the week after your council provided direction, and another one that was done last week. In those meetings, the first meeting, there was an extensive conversation around the numbers. We had our actuary, who's sitting to my left, walking through the calculations that she reached on how, in fact, the city would save over the next five years and over the next 30 years, specifically asked questions about the impact of the entry-age normal change that would occur at the LACERS system, which has since been resolved. And to help facilitate that conversation so that there would be as few misunderstandings, at least on the facts themselves, my office prepared a question-and-answer document, which we submitted to all of you as an attachment, as part of a report, that basically tries to respond to as many questions that were raised by labor, by raised by all of you, raised by members of the public, so that there would be at least clarity on the facts themselves. Throughout, in both of those conversations, labor made it clear, as they stated today, that they believe that this is a matter of meet and confer, and they insisted that we engage in that process. We explained to them that it is the city attorney's opinion that because this involves new city employees effective July 1st, that the city is not required to engage in the meet and confer process. But in terms of having a discussion around the proposal itself and bringing as much clarity as we can, my office sought to do that. In the course of those discussions, no alternative proposal was presented to us by members of the various bargaining units, so there was no additional opportunity to study any other plan.
Can I ask the actuary, is there anything different in what the LACERS board has been instructed to assess actuarially than what you have looked at?
My understanding is that the LACERS board was asked to look at the same proposal we looked at, and we expect they would get the same answer we did.
On tier one, one of the things that we've heard is that this affects tier one because suddenly the money cuts off new employees that would be paying in. When we looked at the actuarial study, or when you conducted the actuarial study, what happens to those costs? Do we pay more in for tier one employees once we begin at tier two?
No, tier one employees still cost what they were going to cost even if they were part of tier two. There's no increase in benefits.
Sure, overall, but does the city's share increase because we don't have workers paying into the same pool?
No, the city's share does not.
Mr. Garcetti, you have to push your button again.
I think it's six minutes under the first speaker, you said? But I can, I think it was just three, usually first speaker gets six.
Just push it.
All right.
Push it again.
Yep.
Okay.
The city's share does not increase, and in fact, there's been a lot of discussion about would the amortization payments increase because the tier is closed, and that's not common practice and is not what's going to happen. It'll be still paid at the same rate it was, even if there was no tier two.
So those funds can be commingled like it is on different peers for the fire employee pension?
Yes, the funds will definitely be commingled.
Okay, so then the contributions of the new folks under tier two would go into that same fund that would exist for tier one because?
Exactly.
Folks have said otherwise, but that's how it would be.
No, the funds will be commingled and invested together.
Mr. Santana, why do you think that the discussions have not yielded more? When folks are asking us to wait for the nine weeks, is it your impression that it will yield nothing differently? Is there any? And one of the things we have here, as Mr. Kukorian, I have discussed before, this is an ordinance, which is not, it's not a charter change, so should new information turn up, this is still a changeable thing. But why do you feel like there has been nothing at the bargaining table? And why do folks feel in the audience like there's been so little discussion in your mind?
I certainly appreciate the frustration. I think, you know, we started this process concurrently with the sworn bargaining units, as you recall, and with the civilian bargaining units. And both the sworn and the civilian bargaining units started with the premise that this is subject of meet and confer. And as I stated earlier, the city attorney has given us an opinion that's contrary to that. With the sworn, we were able to put that issue in a box and basically agree to disagree on the meet and confer issue, and still collectively reach a solution that sought the same dollar savings. So we had a specific proposal that your council had directed us to present to them. It saved us so much money over 30 years. They came back and gave us 10 different alternatives, of which we studied all of them, and one of them actually hit the same target. And so we were able then ultimately reach consensus around that one proposal without having to go through the meet and confer process. They never took it to their members for a vote. It was presented to the public, to Angelenos, for a public vote as required by the charter. And we were successful in developing a new tier on the sworn side. On the civilian side, we haven't been able to get beyond the issue of meet and confer. And so because of that, it's been difficult to really engage in a conversation around the facts. What we had hoped over the next, last 30 days, is that we would have a specific discussion on this proposal that you had adopted for an original vote, and that we could discuss elements of that proposal, the age, the factor, you know, the issue pertaining to the unfunded liability. Our expectation was to have a substantive discussion around the specific elements of that, and again, with the idea that we would agree to disagree and put the issue of meet and confer aside, as we did with the sworn. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that because the issue as to the process was, got in the way to actually having a discussion on the facts.
My time is up right now, but I'll.
Yeah, you got me on a stretch of a technicality, but I'll let you have it. Ms. Perry.
So whatever the technicality is, I'd like some of that, too.
I'm going to give you a little bit of that.
Yeah, you give me some of that, too. All right, Mr. CAO, I just want you to go through some clarifications so that we understand where we are. Does this new proposal touch current employees' assets?
It doesn't do a single thing to current employees. It's all about any employee that's hired after July 1st.
And why does it only apply to new hires?
Both ERC and your council decided, as we move forward with pension reform, that we tailor it around the most basic understanding of the law, which is your current benefit is your vested right. And so we sought to protect the benefit that current employees have. Obviously, we don't have the same opinion when it comes to retired healthcare, and that's why we decided to move forward on that early on. But unlike San Diego and San Jose, who have presented to their voters and who ultimately have voted but unsuccessfully implemented, there has been changes to current employees. And obviously, Mayor Reardon's proposal does specifically change the contributions that current employees would be expected to pay, as well as changing the actual benefit itself.
So state law poses some challenges to that aspect of the Reardon proposal because I think there is an interpretation that current employees' pensions cannot be changed pursuant to state law. Is that correct?
That's the general understanding, without providing them the like benefit in exchange.
Okay. Now, the plan as it stands now, how much does it save the city over the next 30 years?
Over 30 years, it saves over $4 billion. And this is a number that was established by the actuary, and I could certainly have the actuary walk you through how her firm got to that conclusion.
Okay. And then before my time runs out, my six minutes, I want to also have you talk about how this situation has evolved and to note that I believe the employees are now sharing in any future unfunded liability and talk about that. I also want you to talk about the limitation now on retiree healthcare benefits to the individual, in that the retiree now has to pay for the spouse or partner, the difference being now that the partner and spouse are included, and so that's a difference.
Two major changes to what current employees will receive and what future hires will have is the first is that currently the city is 100% responsible for the unfunded liability. And so when the economy does well, that contribution goes down. And when the economy doesn't do well, then our pension contribution goes up, and it's partly why we're facing our deficit as a result of the losses that were experienced a few years ago and the sluggishness in the economy. What this proposal does, for future employees only, is that it shares that liability 50/50, and it allows the ability to ensure that all future hires' pension changes, pension contribution change over a period of time.
So if you'd have the actuary go through the?
Sure.
Okay, great, thanks.
So as part of our analysis, we looked at the projected cost savings for newly hired employees and how much we're going to save on each new hire. And then we projected the city's workforce out for 30 years, which includes pretty much the retirement of most of our current city workers, not everybody, but by 30 years, a lot of them will have been retired and replaced with new employees. And so when we add up all the savings over that period of time for the new employees who the city will hire, it adds up to just over $4 million. All right.
Okay, there are no more speakers on the queue, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Okay, next, let's move to item three. Let's open the, Mitchell, item three, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Mr. President, that item is approved.
Excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Item three, I was just saying, item three was approved.
Okay, now we're going to go to item 10. Fourth with on one.
Fourth with on.
In fact, fourth with on everything. But let's go to item 10. Let's.
Called special for Rose.
It was called special.
It was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
And then fourth with.
Thank you. Okay, on item 10, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. We'll do item nine, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for identification purposes only, which I have to sign here, my affiliation. Anybody but Garcetti or Mayor.
Come on, let's get on the item.
Identification purposes. I had to sign this. I'm reading off my card. Number nine, funding for various community charter bus services. We think that the city does an excellent job when it comes to community charter services. We support you totally. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, we're going to now go to item 12, held special by Arnold Sachs. Oh, yeah, I think voting on nine would be a good idea. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
See, Mr. Clerk, you earned your pay. Good job. Okay, Arnold, we're on number 12.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. This refers to, I'm holding this basically for the Quimby fees, and part of the Quimby fees that were used here to refurbish the City Hall lawn. So I'm wondering why significant Quimby fees couldn't be used to refurbish the lawn around the new LAPD headquarters. There was a lot of dispute about how the lawn was in disrepair and the maintenance that was needed. If you could use Quimby fees for the City Hall upgrade for the lawn, then why can't you use the same Quimby fees or a different portion of Quimby fees to refurbish LAPD? Quimby fees are collected on all these projects for use in the city within a three-mile radius.
Okay, thank you. So on this item, oh, Mr. Sachs, don't go too far, I'm going to call you up on your next item. I'm trying, Mr. Sachs, don't interrupt the meeting. I was trying to save you a walk. Okay, anyway, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now let's go to item eight, called special by Mr. Sachs. You can start his time, because I told him to stay close.
Oh, you did tell me.
Your time has started.
You did tell me.
Now, speak to the item.
See how far I can go there, Mr. President?
Speak to the item.
I can walk away. I am. Part of the item. $2,800 in fiscal year savings, 2010, 2011, and another $2,800 from fiscal year 2011, '12, that have to be reverted to the reserve fund, transferred from the reserve fund to the unappropriated balance fund, transferred from the unappropriated balance fund to the city's general purpose fund. And that's a set of circumstances, but finding out about $43 million in AB 1290 funds, we have no freaking idea.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on that item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, now, we'll move to item five. I've got John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, and Dow House Dude. Come on, Mr. Dude, you're right there.
I'm right here. Yeah. Let me remember. Yeah, rent. Landlords and tenants, here we go again. We should not have landlords and tenants. Veterans without a house, a place? What is wrong with this country? Everybody's homeless because we're greedy. Have you noticed that? Your veterans come back from the war to find no place in their own home. They supposedly fought for everybody and for everybody to have equal rights, and they don't have equal rights. They are called homeless. They are thrown around like a bunch of trash.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you're there, followed by Arnold Sacks.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go there for our recommendations. Some people don't even know what we're talking about. What is REAP? If you are a renter and you think that your landlord has violated a city ordinance about something concerning your building, you go to the city. The city then investigates. They're either gonna find you have, your complaint has merit, or it doesn't. Then the city will give the landlord a certain amount of time to repair it. If the landlord does not repair it within that time, the city says to the renters, from now on, you pay your rent to us until the problem is fixed. What this is, is a series of, of cases where the landlord was found guilty, the landlord did not pay, did not fix it, eventually he, the landlord lost the rent, and then the landlord repaired it, and then the landlord gets his rent back. This is a very good system. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay, no, 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 no comments from the gallery. Mr. Sacks.
No, 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 no comment. Thank you. Again, the city attorney involved in REAP violations, but the city attorney would be involved in foreclosure violations if it was enforced. So, on one hand, we're getting nickels and dimes. On the other hand, we're letting $1,000 bills blow out the window. On one hand, we have a budget deficit collecting nickels and dimes. On the other hand, we have a budget deficit not collecting $1,000 bills per day. On the one hand, we have to cut city attorney personnel who file the court cases, who deal with the court cases in these violations. On the other hand, $1,000 bills. You did the math. City Council's done it well, too.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Krikorian. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Krikorian.
Not, not on this item, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask that number 12 be sent forthwith.
Okay, I've said, in fact, all items are sent forthwith. Okay, now, item 11, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Dow House Dude. Whoever comes first, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks, Dow House Dude.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. This is a resolution relatively affirming the city of Los Angeles' commitment to developing the Chinatown Blossom Plaza at the corner of Broadway and College Avenue. So I'm wondering how this refers or relates to the item that you just had on Wednesday about the moratorium on construction in Chinatown that was bounded by the 110 and a few other streets. And I don't bring that item to the council chambers, but it's continued to next week. So you're looking to develop property at the same time you're looking to present a moratorium that'll be read a second time next week. And I understand it flunked the first time, so why it's being read a second time? That I would appreciate some clarification on. But if it passes the second time, and you're asking for construction here, isn't this within the zone that's part of the moratorium that the city council has acted on by the motion done by the Honorable, oh my God, Jose, no, what the heck's his name? No, Ed Reyes, that's his name. That's his name. So which one are we going with? Is it a moratorium or is it development? Leave it to the city council to get the facts right.
Dow House Dude.
Well, this guy obviously knows more than me about finances. Chinatown shouldn't be called Oriental Town. That way, you integrate all the Oriental races into one instead of having all this division. We should have a world where we should be uniting everybody, not dividing everybody. Chinatown is a cool place. Then you've got Mexican Town and Armenian Town and Japanese Town and, dude, I mean, our differences are cool. I like to see Japanese dressed as Japanese and Mexicans dressed as Mexicans and et cetera. But isn't it time that we stop all those differences and provide housing for everybody and stop all these landlord and tenant disputes? Oh, no, it would throw too many lawyers out of work. It would throw too many real estate people out of work, never mind that everybody else will have a home and everybody will have a place from which they can work. Hello? Wake up, city council. It's time to change the system. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks? I mean, Mr. Walsh? Okay, Mr. Walsh passes on this item, but he's HollywoodHighland.org. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, so now, we are at general public comment. John Walsh, Daniel Jones, yeah, Daniel Jones, Arnold Sacks, please come forward.
John Walsh, this is perhaps the most important public comment I've ever made because this concerns a city councilman who was detained by the police and given a breathalyzer test yesterday, last night. You see, he's not here, Mr. Weezer, and we're asking him to stand down from attendance at these meetings until the police investigation is over. Now, I very seldom read, but I must read everything here for the record. And let me say, first of all, if you want the details, go to mayorsam.com, mayorsam.com. And I'm gonna say, we're asking the LAPD Inspector General, we've already emailed, to investigate the events surrounding Councilman Weezer's city-owned car accident last night and the alleged special treatment of the city councilman by LAPD officers at the scene of the car accident. Here are a few questions. Who pays the damage to the city car he was driving? $53,000 Toyota Hybrid Highlander. Who else was in the car? Was Weezer coming from city business or going to city business? This was a multi-car accident. Will the city pay off the damages to the other cars in the accident? According to the police report, was Weezer's car the cause of the accident? Is there a cover-up of this issue with Weezer? What is happening? We have nothing. And I want to say, the garbage, and I'm naming names, Lyntecum and, and the other reporter, Zanheiser, the LA Times have done nothing. Rick Orlovla, I have respect for because he's been around a long time. He's about 83 years old. He isn't able to deal with this. The LA Times is keeping this story quiet. One of your own, I don't know. The question about the breathalyzer test, do we know he passed that? No, his staff says he passed it because the LAP and Charlie Beck don't say a damn word about this. And why? Because behind all of this is the mayor of the city of Los Angeles protecting Weezer. You are supposed to be above suspicion. You are not supposed to be detained by the police. Garbage on all of you.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, before I call up Mr. Jones, I, I do think it's, it's appropriate for me to indicate that I was contacted by LAPD. Mr. Weezer voluntarily took whatever tests were necessary. They were all found negative. And Mr. Weezer is fine. Nobody was injured. So now, I think I have, is it, is it, is it you, Mr. Sacks, or is it Mr. Jones? I've kinda.
You're on the chair.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. I'm gonna ask you a question. Are you gonna retract the special police operations orders in your verbal agreement right here, right now, Mr. Herb Weston? Yes or no? No, fine. As a citizen of the state of California, I perceive that as a seditious act that just was committed in front of me, and I have all legal right to invoke a citizen's arrest, and I want you to do it right now. The people of Los Angeles are gonna know what side the police department's on. Are they here to protect me from you people or are they here to serve you people? I want to effect a citizen's arrest on Herb Weston right now. Do it. And my testimony will be provided for at the grand jury. Your job is not to make up the.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jones. Sometimes I sit up in this chair and I feel like I'm arrested. Go, go right ahead. Turn his mic on.
The city police department cannot be trusted. You're sending that message, Corporal.
Are you Indiana Jones today?
What's going on? You just showed that everybody in the city of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles Police Department can't be trusted. I was arrested last week under citizen's arrest. I can't do the same thing? Mr. Herb Weston, you should be in custody right now. You didn't ask the people for those special operations orders. You didn't even referendum. You didn't, you just wrote the law. You're supposed to ratify it by amendment. You didn't do that. Sir, Corporal, do your job or don't. I don't care.
If you were Indiana Jones, you could do it.
Be quiet.
Mr. President, he's apparently made his.
There's no point of order here because there won't be any order if the police department doesn't do their job right here, right now, in front of the city of Los Angeles. Do it or don't do it. Thank you very much. I'll be back with the state police to do the same job.
And I'll be sitting right here waiting for you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Sacks, followed by Henry Marine, followed by Dow House Dude.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. I believe maybe I have a reason for Mr. Weezer's unfortunate accident yesterday. It might have been some of the fallout from yesterday's MTA board meeting. And there's been discussion of budget and discussion with about the mayor. But here's a really fascinating part that never made it to the board meeting, although it was in a committee, the Finance Budget Audit Committee, the Fiscal Year 2012 Year End Budget Financial Performance. And in this agenda, it states, sales tax collected from Prop A, Prop C, and Measure R. Budgeted amount, $605 million. Collected amount, $645 million. Well, $645 million is $355 million short of the mayor's $1 billion goal for Measure R. So, $345 million. You have an item on your agenda to put over to talk about transit projects next week. You're $345 million in the hole this past year. In three years of having Measure R, that means you're $4 billion behind because the mayor said, billion dollars, billion dollars, billion dollars, $40 billion in 30 years. Well, you're not making $700 million a year. So you're losing over 300. That's a billion dollars. But discussions with the Long Range Transit Plan led by Zeb Yaroslavsky, and I really have to spit on that, but that's a different story. No discussion. And you would have been proud, Councilman Rosendahl. They talked about the LAX Airport connector yesterday. And all the discussion and discussion and discussion, yet none of them mentioned your good friend, Gina Araposa, and the Green Line extension.
Okay, thank you, Arnold. Okay, Dow House Dude, or Henry, you're after Dow House Dude. And you should just show respect to the other speakers. You shouldn't, no, you don't stand behind them on one leg waving your arms. So now, this is your time. You can do whatever you want. You wanna stand on one leg, wave your arms? Fine. But don't do that with Mr. Sacks or anybody else who's speaking. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just practicing for my speech. I'm sorry. Look, I don't smoke. I don't drink. I don't have car accidents because the city stole my car. You know? There were two police officers over there beating against me. I only had $500, and they beat $800. My car was the best car at the auction. You are thieves with a license. See? I don't drink. I don't smoke. And I'm not Indiana Jones trying to put you all under arrest. I'm not coming here to complain. I'm coming here to explain that it is time for us to create a parallel system where the rich can be rich and the poor can all have a place to live. And the city will be very rich with the taxes they collect from all the properties that are full, not vacant. And they don't have to go punish anybody for having a vacant place that they don't maintain. See? You should be working smart, not hard. And you should not be ripping the people off right and left just to maintain your little status quo. It does not work. It's not working. You are upsetting a lot of people. I don't think I can say, piecing people up. I don't know. Is that allowed? I don't know. Anyway, you allow and you don't allow a lot of things, but you're not doing the things that are necessary to push us into a new society. I wish you would be progressive enough to read my book and implement the ideas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dude. Maybe you should drink and smoke. Mr. Henry Marine, please come forward, follow. Is there someone here named George?
Yes, it's the third year since city council failed to allow the controller to account for the time and money of others than me. That was withheld under MOU 35 and hackler MOUs and a new MOU 62. Now, I'm starting to have to agree with my, my, my councilman here. He says the councilman serving here appear to be acting more like co-conspirators than elected officials. Hacking COLO MOUs show every percent you agreed to take from our daily bread. And now you don't wanna count for it. In one nation under God, we use the check and balance system. Any money don't go on my government check, gotta be carried as a, on my balance as credit for hours of government service, AKA Davis bacon pigs and hogs. Principal initially given shelter for hours of government service under various MOUs. I learned how to do this stuff in the F force in the first place. They made me a blummer. They ain't too much stuff can get hidden from me. So when you gonna count for it? C A O was here. He told you about, you only got three pension plans that you contribute due. He's a liar. He's contributing to five or six union pension plans. The eighth floor, you got the Great West, you're diverting money from city employees. You got a whole bunch of them. But now you say you can't, you've been diverting as many from public employee pension benefits. Now you wanna reform things? Better learn how to count.
Okay, George. Go on, George.
Hi, my name is George from Mac Foundation. I give, Mac Foundation is a nonprofit organization. Foundation from. Foundation from Montebello, all Los Angeles area. He give food, clothes, furniture, hire people in the job, everything free. Already hundred-and-fifty-five people I hire in the new job. Three people, he got a big business, he's a millionaire. Now, too hard for me. I am ninety years old. I want to open up section H for poor people, for supply, everything for family what need. Food, clothes, furniture, pay gas bill, electric bill, my foundation are going to pay. Now, I got a area, nineteen thirty-six Cypress Avenue, Los Angeles, California. I want to help me up city hall, all councilmen, fifteen councilmen. I worked with fifteen councilmen. Hevrika district, I gonna prove one big building and low income people, free everything, and then I gonna pay my foundation all bill, any kind bill and loan. Thank you very much. That's what I want to do. Next time, I got, every day I am here, I want to talk every day. I want a present in January month. I want to buy this with city hall. That's what my opinion, very good opinion, Larenko. I forgot to tell you, tell all people, this building, twenty-two-thousand-dollar income every month.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Thank you. George, thank you. Your time has expired. Sergeants, let him know his time has expired. George, your time... No, no, your time has expired, George. Thank you. Okay, I do want to announce that the dog Spencer's been adopted by Ian from Mr. Parks' office. So our one-hundred percent adoption rate still goes. Mr. Clerk, any more business before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred announcements. Mr. Rosendale.
President, the West LA Community Police Station Open House and Halloween Party will be Saturday, October 27th, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., and again from 6:00 to 9:00. It's over there at 1663 Butler Avenue. Come join the West LA Community Police Station at their annual open house from 12:00 to 4:00. Meet your neighbors and neighborhood officers while enjoying some food, drinks, and music. We'll also be wishing a fond farewell to Senior Lead Officer Phil Enbody, who's retiring after twenty-seven years of dedicated service. And then from 6:00 to 9:00, the police station transforms for the annual haunted house event. Bring the kids back for some candy and some thrills. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Joey B.
You know, Mr. Rosendale, we love you. You are such an inspiration to us all. Just look, let's give him a round of applause. He's here despite this illness, you know. This week, I tell you, Bill, you inspire us all. We love you. You're going to beat this thing.
Thank you, Joey. Just to let you know, I'm getting strong enough to do this.
You sound great.
With all the love and support from my colleagues in the community, it's making a big difference. Thank you, Joe.
We love you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. President. Myself, along with Wreckin' Parks and the Harbor City Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce are hosting a Reggie's Revenge Harbor Halloween Haunt this weekend at the Ken Mulloy Regional Park. Kicks off tomorrow, Saturday, with a 5K run, 11:00 a.m., then Sunday from 12:30 to 8:30. Pumpkin Patch Carnival, spooky hay rides, live music and entertainment, again at the Ken Mulloy Harbor Regional Park and Harbor City. Everyone's welcome. Also a costume contest on Sunday at 4:30. So everyone's welcome. Hoping you can join the Harbor Halloween Haunt. Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow, Saturday, we have in Warner Center Light the Night. It's a walk for Cancer Lymphoma Society. The public's invited. Five p.m. festival begins, 6 p.m. remembrance ceremony, and 7 p.m. the walk begins. Again, Warner Center Park on Topanga, just south of Oxnard. Come out and show your support, help raise dollars to fight lymphoma cancer and related diseases. Also, Mr. President, on Sunday, the 24th Annual Public Safety Officers Mass and Badge Blessing. All members of Law Enforcement Fire Service are invited, and that's going to be at 10 o'clock on Sunday at Transfiguration Church, 2515 West Martin Luther King Boulevard. And that is an annual celebration against 24th Annual. There'll be a barbecue afterwards. All law enforcement personnel are invited. Justice Street Elementary School is having their fall festival. It's Justice Street School. Everyone's invited to that. That's in Mr. Englander's district, West Hills.
There you go again, Ms. Zine.
Well, you know what? Somehow they put it on my schedule. You are, and there is justice with you, sir. Thank you very much.
Justice Street, yes.
And the Jewish Federation Valley Alliance Grand Opening. They're going to open their new headquarters, 1971 Ventura Boulevard, Jewish Federation. That'll be one to three, and that will take place on Sunday. And also at Temple Koltikva, they're going to be discussing their various propositions on the ballot. Public's invited, 3 o'clock, and that is located at 20400 Ventura Boulevard in Woodland Hills. And that is it for District 3. Thank you.
I'm going to call Jimmy Blackman and have him take your BlackBerry away. Any other, any other announcements? If everyone could please rise for adjourning motions? Everybody, please rise. Sergeant, you may want to help George. I don't know if he heard. Okay, adjourning motions, members? Ms. Zine.
Ms. Perry.
Today I'd like to adjourn in memory of Larkin Kathleen Brogan. She was from Pasadena, California, and attended Mayfield Junior School, the Polytechnic School in Pasadena, Princeton University, where she received her Bachelor of Arts degree in architecture in 2009. At the time of her passing, she was pursuing a master's in architecture in the School of Environmental Design at UC Berkeley. She was an outstanding athlete who excelled in both volleyball and softball, the sports she played intercollegiately while at Princeton. She also enjoyed surfing, wakeboarding, running, and bicycling. Her skills in design were universally recognized, and she was well on her way to making a successful career in architecture. She will be greatly missed by her parents, Kevin and Nina Brogan, her brothers Chase and JT, her sister Abby, sister-in-law Pooja, and her beloved cat Pepito, and all those who came in contact with her bright spirit.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we adjourn in council in memory of Dr. Maniusov, a loving father, husband, and cherished community leader. Gene passed away on Tuesday, October 16th, after suffering a heart attack. Gene was born on May 15th in East Los Angeles after graduating from the Ostro School of Dentistry at the University of Southern California in 1955. He began a dentistry practice in the West Dale at the Pico and Westwood. Truly accomplished in his field, Dr. Maniusov served as Executive Director of the Los Angeles Chapter of Adelphi of Alpha Omega International Dentistry Fraternity. In 1961, he settled into the West Dale community of Mar Vista and started a family with his wife Sunny. A dedicated member of the Mar Vista community, Dr. Maniusov was a longtime board member of the West Dale Homeowners Association, served in various capacities to include president. One of his major accomplishments was the installation of the hockey ring at Mar Vista Park, and I urge you to go if you love hockey. It's fabulous. Like many Trojan alumni, Gene was a devoted USC sports fan and often attended USC football games. He's survived by his wife Sunny, his two daughters Valerie and Vicky, as well as three grandsons. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Any other adjourning motions? Members, this council session is adjourned.